Ms. Alvin, can you take role?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And Chair Carwin.
Here.
And I'll note Commissioner Doty is absent.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Please all rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right here. Right wing conspiracy. All ready to begin. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any modifications to our agenda this evening?
No, sir, we do not.
And any presentations?
No, sir.
Any non-agenda public comments?
No, sir.
All right, so that moves us to an approval of the meeting minutes from May 11, 2016. Any comments or motions on that?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from 11th May as written.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it unanimously. Which brings us to the consent calendar. Consent calendar item number 8.1, extension of time number 2015-179, pretentious track map number 31811. Does anyone care to pull this one for comment?
I had made some comments and submitted them to staff already, and I don't feel that it's germane enough to remove this from the calendar.
So you feel comfortable voting on it as it sits?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips. Do we need to do this by roll, or do we just do a...
Yes, roll call, please.
All right, so why don't we take a vote on the consent calendar?
We need a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve all items on the consent calendar.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Madrid.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Chair Phillips. And Chair Carwin.
Aye.
Aye. All right, consent calendar passes, which moves us to the main event of the evening, a public hearing, number 9.1, for plot plan 2015-099. This is a continued matter. It was previously heard on May 11, 2016, at which time we did get a staff report. Do we have a supplemental staff report for today?
Yes, Chairman Tamara Harrison, our associate planner, has a presentation on this item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Tamara Harrison presenting for staff. Agenda item 9.1 is plot plan number 2015-099 and mitigated negative declaration. The site is located south of Newport, north of Rim Creek Path, west of Bradley Road, and east of Winterhawk Road, between the existing McDonald's and Arco AM PM. The existing general plan is specific plan 208, the Calle Nevada specific plan. The surrounding general plan to the south, east, and west is also Calle Nevada specific plan, and to the north across Newport Road is Economic Development Corridor. The site is currently vacant. To the west, there's an existing restaurant. There's an existing gas station. To the east, to the south, there's vacant properties, and to the north, there's Newport Plaza across Newport Road. Planning application, plot plan number 2015-099, is a proposal to construct a 9,750-square-foot commercial retail building on 1.77 acres. The proposed building will include 2,200-square-foot restaurant with drive-through, 3,490 square feet of office space, and 4,060 square feet of retail space. Here you have the site plan. You can see there's a single building on the parcel with the northernmost portion of the building being the restaurant portion, the office in between, and the southernmost portion of the building is the office, excuse me, the retail space. Here you can see elevations. This is the building looking from the east. There's a rendering on the bottom there. You also have the elevations looking from the north, the west, and also the south. The project also includes a monument sign. The monument sign will be eight feet tall by eight feet wide. It will include four tenant panels on each side and a total of 31.35 square feet of sign area. There were some concerns regarding the landscape planner along Newport Road. Ordinance 348, section 1812, requires that a planner at least five feet wide shall be provided adjacent to all public road right-ofways unless this requirement is waived by the planning director. The applicant does not provide a five-foot-wide, excuse me, five-foot-wide landscape planner along the frontage of Newport Road right-ofway line. There will be approximately 15 feet of landscaping in the parkway along Newport Road, which will also act as a buffer. The project includes a five-foot planner along the front of the actual building. Although the applicant isn't providing the five-foot landscape planner adjacent to the right-ofway, they do have additional landscaping in the front of the project, and therefore the intent of the ordinance is met, and specific requirement for the landscape to be adjacent to the right-ofway should be waived. The amount of landscaping provided along Newport Road will be consistent with what's provided to the west with McDonald's and also to the east at the Arco site. Pursuant to ordinance 348, section 18.12, requests for modifications from parking standards, the planning director may without notice or hearing permit modifications to the circulation and parking layout requirements where topographic or other physical conditions make it impractical to require strict compliance with these requirements. Pursuant to this section, the applicant is seeking relief on the following requirements: that no parking space shall be located within three feet of any property line, the width of the installs, and the length of the stacking spaces. Several spaces are located within three feet of the interior property lines. However, all of the property is currently under one owner and reciprocal access, and parking agreements will be condition of approval on the project. The requirement for the parking spaces to be located no more than three feet from the property lines is more applicable to exterior property lines or where parking abuts roads, and we don't have that situation here. Approximately four of the installs have been reduced in width from the required 11 feet to the requested 10 feet. The width was reduced to accommodate the landscape planner and pedestrian pathway while still providing adequate parking for the proposed project. Increasing the width of the four stalls is considered impractical because it would shift the entire row of parking, resulting in the drive aisles and adjacent parking stalls not being aligned. You can kind of see that in the exhibit there. The dimensions of stacking spaces, it's required to be 25 feet in length. The project only provides 20 feet in length for each stacking space due to the building orientation, and because of the project being in infill development, the space for drive-through is constrained. The location of the drive-through and the stacking has been reviewed by the city's engineering department, which includes internal traffic circulation review, and the stacking provided was justified by the traffic study. Increasing the length of the drive-through resulted in skewing the drive aisle that connects the site to McDonald's and the main driveway on Newport. The stacking length has therefore been determined to be acceptable. We have further engineering...
Can I stop you right there for just a second?
Sure.
Can you back that up and just show me where, is there a larger picture where that stacking is occurring?
Correct. Let me go back to the site plan. So you'll see the stacking to the far right of the portion of the site plan there.
So at the top of this line of cars here, at the top of the photograph, that's the drive-through pickup window?
Correct. So they'll go, they'll, is there a pointer? Oh, they can see my mouse. Okay, okay. So from the entrance here, and so this would be the driveway, and yes, they would come around, the pickup would be around here, and then they'd exit along the driveway.
And the entrance to that stacking would be from where?
From this point here.
Let's say there's two more cars in that line, where would they be lined?
Depending on which direction they're coming from, they could either be, where did I ask though, coming from this area here, or if they enter from Newport around the McDonald's, they may be coming in from this area.
Okay, thank you. I was just having difficulty understanding the inset.
Oh, no problem.
Please continue.
Pursuant to public works in engineering conditions 125 and 126 regarding designing drainage facilities to accommodate the 100-year storm events, the applicant will be required to design all drainage facilities to accommodate 100-year storm flows. Based on the submitted project drainage study, the applicant is proposing to connect to an existing 12-inch pipe on site. Preliminary review of the study indicates that this connection is a design area of concentration for the project, and final engineering will ensure that the stated conditions are satisfied. There was a workshop on the item back in August of 2015 before the planning commission where the issues were addressed, whether or not McDonald's should be used as a trendsetter for the design of the project. Current status, the building has maintained the architectural theme presented to the commission at the workshop with some additional enhancements, including more tile, trellis, and lighting. Landscape screening for the drive-through. The landscaping has been reviewed to ensure that there is screening along the drive-through. An actual row of trees was included in that. The entry monument to shield headlights from cars in the driveway, or the drive-through. Current status, the monument sign is proposed. However, the sign is oriented so that it's perpendicular to Newport Road. That way, it can be viewed by passing motorists. If the monument sign were moved to be parallel to the road, it would be difficult to read the sign. Landscaping has also been proposed along the driveway to shield the headlights. We discussed back at the workshop relocation of the trash enclosure. Current status, the trash enclosure was not relocated because it needs to be located in an area that easily, that's easily accessible to all tenants within the building. Also, the current location is more visible, so illegal dumping or scavenging in the trash will be less likely. The location is also safer for employees who will not have to walk across the main drive aisle traversing the site east to west, so less possible conflicts with vehicles are likely to occur. Reducing the footprint of the building to address parking, landscaping, and water quality. Although the size of the bottom, excuse me, building was not reduced, the project was expanded to the south to provide additional areas for parking landscaping and to accommodate water quality. Traffic safety measures. The project, including TIA, has been reviewed by the city's Traffic Division of the Engineering and Public Works Department, and the circulation is considered to be safe, and conditions of approval for improvements have been added on the project. With that, staff recommends to conduct a public hearing, adopt resolution number PC-16263, adopting a mitigated negative declaration based on the findings incorporated in the initial study and the conclusion that the project will not have significant effect on the environment, and adopt resolution number PC-16264, approving plot plan number 2015-099 subject to the attached conditions of approval and based upon the findings and conclusions incorporated in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Do we have any questions? Let's start with technical questions based on the staff report from the commission.
Can we go to, I don't know which slide it is, you may have to pull up this. We've got this here. What I want to look at is the easement that's going to be given behind the Arco. Let's go to whatever slide would show that best. I want to see the Arco. Do you have one with the perspective of the Arco?
Are you talking about the existing easement, or...
No, yeah, why don't I use this thing?
Yeah, we may not have that slide.
Can you rotate that? Perfect.
So if you look here, here's the Arco, and then here's the easement, right? This is the easement. Is the Arco property line here, or is the Arco property line here?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you want to get this option in, or I like your tab?
Yeah, it's the first property line, so the one to the north. Correct.
So, the, okay, that's my first question. So we're not impeding on his legal property line. Second question is, this property here, once that is developed, is there intention by the city or staff to realign this easement over here? Because right now what happens is a car comes in here, and it turns over here, and then it turns in here. It's kind of kitty-wonkers. If we realigned it here, it would be better. Is that the intention of traffic, or would that be a condition you had called, or what is your intention with that alignment?
We'll take a look at the development application at that time, and also the underlying beneficiary of the easement. So there is definitely an opportunity to take a look at that and make the flow a little bit better.
So is this easement now owned by this southern property owner, or is this easement?
We are not sure. So during, because we didn't really look at that, yeah. So during the development of the south portion, that's when we're going to investigate and find out.
Does this easement exist now, or is it going to be granted on this development?
I think it's already existing, and Tamara could probably...
Was it an easement that Arco's been benefiting by all this time?
Yeah.
It's at that entrance right there, right? Just right here into the street.
If you follow that off to the right, that's where Bradley Road is.
Well, no, this isn't Bradley. This is, well, we're, uh, not, oh, this, yeah, yeah. So this is Bradley. So, but going into the Arco, which I thought a lot of gaps there, I believe this is where you go in and turn in here, right?
Yes.
So he's been benefiting from that easement, is that correct?
Yeah.
So, no one knows who owns that easement. Is it this southern property, or is it a separate parcel? It's not owned by the city or anything, right?
I'm, yeah.
We can let the applicant talk about that.
It's definitely not owned by the city.
So when the applicant gets up, let's talk about that. That's my only question.
Okay. I want to acknowledge, we got some correspondence in late. It's my understanding that some correspondence came in at about 4:40 PM today before the meeting?
Correct, and that is in your blue folders.
That is the letter from Olive Owen Associates dated June 8, 2016.
Correct.
And has staff had an opportunity to read that late correspondence?
I'll ask the engineering department.
We didn't have enough time to take a look at it. We kind of like just read it in really quickly, and so, no, we would like to have enough time to read it some more.
Do we really want to hold on to that?
I'll ask our city attorney, is there a cutoff for submission of evidence to a planning commission meeting by which we are required to consider it?
Typically, it would be up until the beginning of the meeting, which is 7 o'clock. So I don't believe that this is late correspondence. And in any event, they, any member of the public could come and testify orally to the same issues as well. So I don't think it would be considered late.
But if the commission found that the issues in the letter are unwarranted, we could approve and write that?
Absolutely. The commission has the letter before them. It was emailed to them a couple hours ago as well, and I know that there has been prior correspondence on this issue too. So it's up to the commission at this point to determine what it wants to do.
Okay.
Can I ask one other question?
Yeah, please.
What is it that you're concerned about? Because you had the first letter, and we talked about, and then this is another one. Is there significant issues that you still need to address, or you just want the comfort level of having read it?
We just want to have the comfort level of having read that comment.
Well, let me ask, procedurally, let me cut you off there for just one second. Procedurally, if we approve this plan, does it need to go to city council, or does it end with us?
You are a final body.
We're the final body on this, so there's no opportunity for re-review of the...
Less appealed.
All right. I'm frustrated by the fact that this gigantic letter came in two hours before the hearing that we've already continued to consider the last gigantic letter.
Excuse me, could I speak? I'm the attorney for the applicant on this project.
We haven't called for the applicant's comments at this point. We're still...
I just wanted to speak to the issue of the possible continuance, if that was possible.
Well, why don't you let us have our commissioners' comments first? I'd love to hear from you, but I'm trying to avoid doing this whole thing multiple times. Well, then I'll ask traffic, our engineering department. There's quite a lot here that deals very specifically with traffic alignments and congestion issues and the validity of our traffic studies. Is engineering in a position to stand by their initial recommendations in light of having received this?
Yes, the, oh, Nick Minichelli, consultant traffic engineer. Yes, the traffic study was prepared in accordance with the city's TIA guidelines, so we still stand by what was put there, it's still okay.
Okay.
Can I ask another technical question?
Yes, please.
In regard to that, there's claims made in this and in the, and I just perused this, that the traffic analysis did not include or expect traffic coming in on the easement there. Is that correct or not correct? Did it account for traffic coming in on the easement?
I believe it did, but the developers, traffic engineer could probably answer that a little bit more. I believe it did.
Good, and I will represent everybody. I did have an opportunity to read the letter, so I'm not kind of flying blind here. I just want to make sure that everybody was, because I'd rather not continue this. We already did it once, and I'd rather go forward. So from a legal perspective, we've met our burden as far as review goes?
Yeah, absolutely. You have the letters before you. You can act today if you'd like.
Okay. Any other technical questions of staff before we hear from the applicant? Having heard none, let me just make sure that I don't have one. I do have one question with regard to the, I guess it's page seven of nine of the report. It says section three stacking, and it says the spaces, the stacking of, the stacking spaces is required to be 25 feet in length. However, the project only provides 20 feet in length. So it appears that there is an exception made in this case? Why is the 20 feet permitted when 25 is the requirement?
Let me just review that section really quick.
Thank you. Because really, that seems to be the big sticking point in this, so we're focusing on it a little bit. And if engineering can comment on that while she's reviewing it. It's not, it's out of engineering's...
Yeah, I was not part of that.
Okay.
And it may, the answer may be on the previous slide. I think it was, sorry, I forgot.
The report indicates that the stacking required, the space required is 25 feet, but this project only provides 20 feet, and the recommendation is to approve. So I'm curious why that is.
Right. I know it had to do with the fact that the site is constrained because it is, in fact, an infill development. See, and I'm just going through the notes here, I apologize. So if we had to account for the additional five feet, we would basically, it would skew the drive aisles with the McDonald's property. So I think as for a better design, there was an exception made to that as well.
So the city is saying that the five feet, the burden of correcting the alignment to add for the other five feet is way greater than the risk or potential burden on traffic that it creates by requiring the additional five feet?
Correct.
And the site can accommodate that five-foot reduction based on traffic patterns?
Correct.
I understand, thank you.
I have one question with regards to that. The illustration on page seven of nine mentions 120 feet, seven cars, and when you go over to the secret checklist on page one, last paragraph, it mentions six spaces. And I'm wondering, there seems to be some kind of an inconsistency there between the secret checklist and this illustration that says seven cars, and on page one, it says six cars. I think I might need some clarification with that.
Commissioner, do you happen to have the exact page number of the environmental document?
Yes, page number for, page seven of nine...
Correct.
Of the staff report, and then on the secret checklist is page one. At the bottom, it's the last paragraph on page one. The paragraph reads, "Based on ordinance 348 standards, total required parking is 75 spaces plus six spaces for stacking." Now, when I look at item three on the staff report, it has 120 feet, seven cars, under the...
I'm not exactly sure why, what the difference is. I do know that the minimum required stacking is the six spaces, so that, in fact, the seven would exceed what's required.
Is the approval, the recommendation for approval based on six or seven?
Based on seven.
So it's based on seven, but the checklist says six?
Correct.
I think we need to get some kind of clarification on that.
I think we need clarification from the applicant's engineer. I'm looking at an exhibit here. They show seven vehicles using 25-foot stacking, so I'm getting a little confused on what was actually used, 25 feet or 20 feet for the vehicle length. It's in one of these exhibits, and we can show it.
All right.
Okay.
Seems like this would be a good opportunity to hear from the applicant. So can we open it up for the applicant at this time?
Yeah, we left it open.
So let's hear from the applicant at this point. Do we have anybody from the applicant who wants to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners and staff. My name is Teddy Hamwe, and I'm here on behalf of the project, the shops at Newport Road. Rarely do I ever get up and speak, however, due to recent events, I feel it is important to highlight certain facts. All of you are already aware of our commitment to working with staff in providing a fresh and attractive retail building to continue to enhance the Newport corridor. I would like to thank staff for their resources and commitment to get the project where we are today. What some may or may not be aware of is the delay our neighbor has caused through their objection to overall development, which have affected 150 temporary and permanent jobs, sales tax revenue to the city of Menifee, mitigation fees, and overall growth. Their true objection is to impede our ability to develop our parcel, and to infringe on that right is illegal and immoral, especially when staff has vetted our project, designed, and furthermore supports the development for approval. Our neighbor's objection is also coupled with the fact that even though our neighbor is a guest on our land for purposes of ingress and egress, not once has he ever maintained such roads, as he has been the only... such roads, as he has been the only user on the corner for years. He opposes development, yet he benefits it... Benefits from it, and does not pay his fair share when asked for it. He complains about losing visibility with our project, yet his existing overgrown trees block his main monument sign. Construction was scheduled to commence June 1 of this year, but because of these setbacks, that has been set out to July 15 or later, as our key subcontractors have arranged work in the meantime, delaying our schedule even more. This delay is not only costing us $1,800 per day, but has already cost us one tenant who occupied 40% of the building. I ask everyone to remember that this land belongs to an approved specific plan, and subsequently, a mitigated negative deck was provided for this project, which is in line with all pertinent and previous environmental and traffic mitigation measures. To now attack findings from an already approved specific plan is groundless and is simply a waste of time and resources, especially when the mitigated negative deck further supports such findings and conclusions. In short, this project is Menifee, and what Menifee stands for, so I ask the commission to treat it accordingly, and let us deliver another building to the city's vision. Thank you.
Do we have anybody from the engineering department of the applicant who can talk about these discrepancies we're noticing? Hopefully, you've been taking notes.
Hi, my name is Charlene So, I'm with the Urban Crossroads. I'm the traffic consultant for the project applicant. Let's see here. I think the exhibit that Nick was referring to in terms of the stacking question, that was on exhibit one of our response to comments letter, and we did go ahead and correct that. Instead of the 20 feet, we did utilize the 25 feet. So, the seven-vehicle stacking is based on the 25-foot requirement, not 20 feet. So, that's just that clarification. And then... I think there was...
The other issue, the language, was that six spaces versus seven?
That I'm not aware of, because that wasn't in... In fact, I don't even think the parking was addressed in the traffic study itself. It was addressed as part of the response to comments to the previous letter that was received last month. So, the only place where that exhibit occurs, or any of that language occurs, is in the response to comments letter and in that exhibit. And what I show is seven vehicles based on 25 feet.
However, it's in your secret checklist.
That checklist, I don't think was prepared by my firm. Is that... I'm not sure if that's a city checklist, or...
No, I think it was one that was prepared for the Calneva site. I'm not sure about that, but I'm pretty sure it was developed for that entire parcel of land.
Okay, so we can...
Good afternoon, Mitch Adgason, Adcan engineer, 6879 Airport Drive, Riverside, California. I'm the applicant's civil engineer. Ordinance 348 requires six stacking distances... Or six stacking spaces behind the menu board. With the current site plan, we provide seven. I think that clarif... Hopefully, that clarifies the issue.
So, six are required, but you're going to allow seven?
Correct.
So, it's actually more than the secret checklist requires?
Correct.
We were confused that the secret checklist was more restrictive than what you were trying to accomplish, but you're actually giving more space than is required?
Yes, correct, one more space.
Thank you. I believe that...
Can I ask one other question? Something brought up, maybe I misunderstood. The entrance... The entrance between this project and Arco on Newport, that road in, that access road in, not access, but the entrance, is that physical road that's in the parcel of the project, or is it owned by Arco? It's owned by you?
It's owned by the applicant. And there's an easement in favor of Arco to access through that easement.
That's a private contract easement between the two parties?
Yeah, it's a civil agreement, or some kind of easement agreement that's recorded between the owner and... Or between Arco and the applicant.
Will it be deeded and part of permanent land... Part of the permanent land record, or is it going to stay a private agreement?
Well, it's going to be maintained ownership by the applicant, and the easement will stay in favor of Arco, and whatever other parcels it may benefit for ingress, egress.
Thank you. Anything else the applicant wants to present at this time? No? All right. So, should we re... We didn't have to renotice this, because it was properly noticed the first time, and it's been left open?
Correct.
Okay. And we did note correspondence. I noted it on the record from Olivoe. The... Was there any other correspondence received that we need to note on the record?
No, sir.
The Urban Crossroads letters dated June 3. That was received after the last hearing.
Correct, but it was in the staff report.
But it's included in the staff report.
Correct.
All right, so at this time, let's open it up for public testimony. Do we have any speakers?
Ann Moore. I'm Ann Moore, and I represent the applicant on this project, and I'm here to answer any questions. I just wanted to confirm that I had sent in a letter as well, and I wanted to make sure that that was part of the record. It should be... I sent it back, it's dated May 25?
Correct, that was part of the staff report package as well.
Okay, great, perfect. And also, I believe that there was a question regarding the findings and the reason why there was an exception being granted, and I just wanted to make sure that it was stated in the staff report that the reason for the exception was because of the building orientation and the fact that it's an infill development, and that's why there was a finding that there was sufficient topographic and other physical conditions that made it impractical to require street... Strict compliance with the parking requirements. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was put on the record as well. So, if there's any other questions, we are here to answer them. Thank you.
Any other public testimony?
Yes, Eduardo Olivoe.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I represent Ed Zeta, the owner of the Arco AMPM. As noted, we have submitted additional correspondence and evidence for the record. We had provided evidence for the record previously. Yeah, I want to respond to the... First of all, I want to assert a procedural objection that I asserted last time, that's the Nightlife versus Beverly Hills case. We made a public records request for communications regarding this project, haven't gotten a response just yet. So, for the record, we're making that objection, in the event that this thing goes for... Any further, excuse me. The applicant is upset because my client is asserting his rights, and he's concerned... My client is about his investment in the property. He's invested what, to him, is his life savings, so he's concerned about the viability of his business going forward. So, he's not anti-development, he's not anti-development at all. He just wants to make sure that development here proceeds in a manner that considers his interests. He's afraid, frankly, that his business will go under as a result of some of the traffic misunderstandings in terms of the analysis. We pointed them out in our testimony. After the first hearing, you know, we did receive... My client hadn't received it before I got involved, the second traffic report. And so, we've submitted that second traffic report to our traffic engineer, who has provided a supplemental analysis, which is attached to your letter. We ask that you consider those issues and allow us the opportunity to engage with staff, with the applicant's engineer, and come to a solution that would allow us to protect our interest, my client's interest, that is. He's not anti-development. All he wants to do is protect his investment and not go under as a result of this project. We ask that you give him that consideration.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Playing English, if you had a magic wand, because I believe in hearing both sides of the story, what do you want them to do? Don't tell me what's wrong.
Sure.
Tell me what you want done.
Yeah, and I'm not an engineer, obviously. But as I understand it, you know, what might work here is if there was a separate driveway access for the project and a separate driveway access for my client's Arco off of Newport, and perhaps, and I don't know if it's possible with the easement, shutting off access to that service road, and then also providing him with an additional right to put a sign on the west side of his property?
West of the project.
Right, to make sure that there's adequate line of sight, you know, to the Arco as people are coming eastbound on Newport.
So, just so I understand, you want them to create another entrance to the project, probably west of the existing one off of Newport, right?
That's my understanding of what would work, yes.
That's what you want, and that you want the access road that's south of him shut off, so there's no access there? Is that what you want? I just want to make sure I understand.
Not necessarily south, the...
South of the Arco?
Where the existing service road is, that... Where his driveway is.
Yeah, off of Bradley.
If that was closed off, and he had a separate driveway, you know, further east of that to his... To his property of a Newport.
Let's make this crystal, crystal clear. So, right now, as we had this up earlier, there was an easement off of Bradley coming in. You want that shut off. Is that what you're saying? I don't understand what you're saying.
Not that easement. So, that's in the back of the Arco, right? The easement?
Yes.
Yeah, it's the easement... It's the Arco driveway coming off of...
Okay, so what do you want? So, here's his Arco. Here's the entrance they're proposing, which he uses currently.
If you cut that off and have a driveway access here, and one for the project, we think that would alleviate his issues.
You don't want people coming in here. I don't understand that problem. You want to have another access. If he had another one here, what would it hurt him to have this existing here?
Well, yeah, I don't know that that would impact him if he had that, but the two driveways are really what we think would be helpful. Just as long as he had his separate access here.
And what are your thoughts on this easement here? What's your problem with that? So, you're... What it boils down to is you want another entrance on your property, and you want this access over moved over here? Access to the project. And you don't want it here because you're afraid it's going to cut off access in here for him going in? I don't understand what the problem is.
Right, but if he had one here, that would alleviate it.
Alleviate what?
Well, he's concerned about access onto his property, and so if you have, you know, stacking or queuing that occurs at the entrance that exists now, then the concern is that his customers will bypass his gas station, and he'd lose his business.
So, your concern is that people are going to go all the way from the drive-thru, all the way up the drive-thru, and then all the way back down that easement, all the way back out to Newport, blocking off the entrance? Like a big horseshoe?
I'm not sure I understand what you're saying.
How would the stacking block that entrance to your client's property?
As cars are coming into the service road, you know, there's a concern that, you know... First of all, there's traffic coming to the project, and cars, you know, trying to exit, you know, from his, you know, property, that there'll be conflict with those vehicles. Also, cars coming out of the project using that access road, trying to turn right onto Newport Road, you know, that that stacking will back up and impact his driveway so that the cars can't come in or out. That's the concern.
When you look at this plan, however, you can see...
Hold on a second, hold on a second. Let's... Hold on a second. Are we procedurally out of line here? Are we permitted to even have this discussion?
You're permitted to have this discussion as long as you're asking questions. The three minutes is sort of gone at this point. If you're asking questions of the speaker, that's fine. If you'd like a response from staff at this point, that may be a good idea, or a response from the applicant's representative, that's fine also.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure we were permitted to engage in this back and forth.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's get to engineering, and then Commissioner Phillips will have you ask your question.
Sure. In response to adding another driveway on this roadway, moving and... Having another driveway further east towards a signal is not safe. It wouldn't work.
Too close to the corner, right?
Exactly, you're too close to the corner, you won't be able to make a safe exit from your driveway and get in line to go on through to Newport. And actually, reading through the new comment letter quickly, on comment seven, the Arco traffic engineer actually mentions conflict points with multiple driveways. So, the point of adding another driveway would create multiple conflict points, which kind of defeats the purpose of a safe entry. I think their engineer would actually agree with that.
Is that a two-lane in? Is it a one-in and one-out? Is that the width?
Yeah, it's wide enough for one in and one out.
Is it... Would a legal solutionist have a no-stopping sign on that coming in, so people could not queue there, they would have to queue in the back? Could you put up signage that says "no stopping" at any time?
Are you talking about on Newport, or are you talking about on...
You turn right from Newport and turn into the project?
You wouldn't want a stop sign, because then that would create backup onto Newport.
Oh, no, a no-stopping sign.
Yes. Well, no, you couldn't. You couldn't. I don't see why someone would stop unless there's a...
His concern is that there's going to be 30 people coming in for Dunkin' Donuts, right? And that they're going to fill up the entrance, they're going to fill up the queue coming, you know, going into Dunkin' Donuts. It's just like a Starbucks, there's one over by my work that does that. So, that's his concern, and then no one can get into his project. If you had a noticing signage that says "no stopping," it would force him to go back in the parking lot and queue back there, and thus, his parking lot, his... The entrance to him and this is not blocked.
You probably could, you could say no blocking of an intersection, which the intersection would be into his driveway. How... Why did you actually say the driveway would... 50 feet is enough to... Were those cars stacking up against that curb to get around him probably and go in and actually enter into that Arco? 50 feet's pretty wide.
You're saying it is enough to go around, or not enough?
I believe so. If you assume a 12-foot lane, you have 12-foot for cars to make a right out of Arco to stack to get onto Newport. You have 12 feet for cars on the...
In essence, a center lane, and then 12 feet over there.
Exactly, and still 14 feet left over.
So, if people did stack coming off of Newport, and they're turning right into the project, and they stacked all along there, made a little U-ing, they're all stacked in the lineup to get their coffee, people could still enter?
Based on that width, I believe so.
The concern is they're leaving as well, as they're trying to make a right turn onto Newport.
In my opinion, I don't believe that many people from that... From that... This development would take that exit. I believe they actually would go to Arco. I can't remember what was shown in the study. Not Arco, but to Bradley. They would use that as a more efficient way to get out, I believe.
They can make a left.
You can make a left.
And they could also come out of there and go the other way, towards Winterhawk.
Yeah.
Right. Commissioner Phillips, did you have a question?
I'm going to withdraw that. My concern was, with this emphasis on stacking, it appears from all of the diagrams we have in plot plans, that that stacking is actually occurring on the applicant's property and not on the right-of-way, which, incidentally, is also owned by the applicant. So, I'm trying to figure out, in my way of thinking, how the stacking on the applicant's property is impacting Arco. It doesn't make... I'm foggy there.
They're concerned that some people are coming in, that you're going to have cars stacking here, 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 and here, and here, here.
Oh, okay.
That's what the concern was.
Okay.
But he was saying... You're saying it's 50 feet wide?
Right.
Which means, in essence, it's three to four lanes. So, even if they stacked on both sides, going in and out, there would still be a lane to turn in.
Yes.
But will everyone be leaving right there? The question is...
Wouldn't... If they're all stacked up, you wouldn't leave that way?
That's true.
We can save this for discussion. Any other questions of Mr. Olivoe? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe the applicant can talk about some of these issues?
Let's find... Are there any other... Is there any other public testimony?
No, sir.
All right. Does the applicant care to respond?
The Calneva specific plan allows for two points of access off of Newport Road. The main entry on the west end, which we modified when McDonald's came in, and this secondary one that is benefiting Arco. At no point can we add another one. We'd be going against all environmental docs. If we had a third, we just couldn't. It's actually a deed restriction to only have two on there. In regards to a horseshoe queue, I guess, if you guys would call that, there's still an access off of Bradley, which is 36 feet, I believe.
You're talking about Newport?
Right, but what I'm saying, if there's a stacking on Newport, he doesn't have one way in. He's got two ways in. So, that still alleviates some of the concern, if you ask me. So that still alleviates some of the concern, if you ask me. As far as, I believe, the owners of the easement, we are the owners of...
The one south of the Arco?
Yeah, that's correct.
You own the parcel or the easement?
Own the parcel, and the easement is recorded.
So do you own that property just to the south or just the easement?
The whole property.
You own this one that goes along Bradley?
That's correct.
You own this and along on Bradley?
We own the whole block except the two gas stations.
Oh, okay. Okay. So why didn't you align that easement better, so there isn't this jockeying that goes [makes a sound] into the Dunkin' Donuts?
I think we could feather off a little bit of that angle, but we were maintaining the curb cut along Bradley.
Oh, we didn't want to cut in the curb, okay.
That's right.
What are your future development plans for that parcel?
We don't have any. We're, we're trying to do a project as it comes. We had a project, and my tenant left. You know what I mean? So that's, that's our issue.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I got a new speaker slip, if you would like that.
Fair enough.
Ed Sada.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Ed Zada, I'm the owner of Arco AM PM. First of all, for the record, I take offense to statements such as, "My action's been immoral." This is nonsense. I'm only asking for a responsible development. That's it. Actually, a responsible development would be much more helpful to me than probably many other people. So these statements, there's no place for it. And as far as the matter of the stacking and this access road is concerned, the problem is that the developers are presenting themselves as if everyone will come through the McDonald's entrance to come to this development. Just common sense says that if they are going to have, for example, a Dunkin' Donut at that location, no one will come into an entrance for McDonald's to make all around to go to Dunkin' Donuts. They will come right by Dunkin' Donut, which is right by this access road, and will make the turn and come around. That is the truth. I don't care how much they turn it around and they make different representations. The truth and the fact is that, it's human nature. Nobody's going to see a sign for McDonald's and go in, look for coffee at Dunkin' Donuts. They will see the Dunkin' Donuts and will make the turn. And when they're constantly making the turn, they will try to go back from the same way. So that will become, even though they said that originally that there's going to be zero traffic, that will become the major part of this traffic. That is the problem, not all this nonsense that they have stated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public speakers?
No, sir.
So I guess we can close the public hearing at this time, at 7:53 PM. This opens it up for discussion among the Commission. Any comments from the Commissioners that we need to discuss for deliberation purposes?
I think his concern is, is valid as a concern. Whether we act on it's another issue. You've got timing here, the, the, the bulk of the traffic would be morning, right? And I don't, I don't drink coffee, so, but I know in the mornings it's big. And when else? Is it after work? I don't know when the queuing would be. When is Starbucks busy?
Well, I would imagine that a Sunday, because they sell so many donuts, Sunday mornings are big for getting donuts and things like that.
So mornings and Sundays, so you have that issue. This is not an all-day issue. If I were going there, I would actually think business would increase at the Arco. I personally buy gas at your Arco quite a bit. My church is down the street, constantly buy there. If my kids, we clean the church, guess what we do after church? Clean the church on Saturdays. We go get donuts as treats. So I will go get a donut, and then I'll go, "I need gas." To me, that is a behavior you must consider as, that must be considered as well, not just the, the, the problem of the stacking. So the fact that he has benefited from this easement, which is not even his own, I think needs to be taken into consideration. This property owns a right to use it, as well as the easement below him. So I, I think that the project is fine the way it is. I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill here. I think his business will actually increase, but, and I do not think there's any safety concerns. That's my opinion on that.
I actually concur with that, because that's what I had in my own findings, too. I had a couple of pages on that. I actually went out and looked at the site, and I find myself concurring with Commissioner Thomas on that.
Comments, Commissioner Madrid?
I can understand Mr. Zada's concerns, but I tend to agree that you will increase your business, and I think traffic will flow fine. I live right by there, I frequent those businesses, including yours, so I...
Uh, yeah, I think it's a pretty unanimous feeling that we believe your business will benefit from this, but we're not business economics, economicists?
Economists.
Economists. Um, I shop at your store all the time, I'm there probably three times a week, as it is now. The issues with another entrance and location of a sign, regardless of this project, you could bring those before the, the city yourself. If you think you want to put another driveway in there, you can bring it in and have it reviewed. You've got kind of a peek behind the curtains that, probably not, based on the spacing. Moving the sign or do, you could work with the developer, maybe ask them for a sign easement further up down the road if you think there's going to be a vision-blocking issue, or you can come before the city and apply for an exception to put a sign up there if you think that's going to impact your property. Valid concerns. Not something that needs to hold up this development, because you can express those rights no matter what their development plan is. I do not think it would be human nature to have traffic queued all the way back up to Newport and then try to go back out that same driveway. I think if anybody saw that line stacked up when they came out from the other side of Dunkin' Donuts, that they'd probably go out by McDonald's or go out the easement to Bradley. Going back down that driveway would not be something that would seem to be wise to do anyway. So based on that, I think the problem, and besides, this entrance to the Arco AM PM parking lot is very, very close to the end of the driveway as well, so it's not, you know, if, if, if the driveway was at the back, might have a different issue altogether, but it's right here at the front. It only takes a car length or two to get in there.
If I'm not mistaken, if that Arco went in now, that driveway would not be permitted, because you look at what the CVS was put in, and its driveway was way down.
Right.
Every gas station I see has a much more elongated, so...
So, uh, those are my thoughts on it, and I just want to make sure that Mr. Zada and his attorney know that all of the stuff that they've presented has been carefully considered. We've given it full discussion, it hasn't been taken lightly by any means by this Commission. Any other comments from the Commissioners, questions, anything? So perhaps, is there a motion on this?
I think we need to make a note that if we do passes, that, I don't know legally how this happens, but that if any large looming and, um, things arise out of this traffic in reviewing this letter, would they have the right to stop it or something? What if, I doubt it's going to happen, but if they read and said, "Hey, we cannot go forward with this, and yet we approve the project," what would happen?
You mean if the, the applicant?
No, the traffic.
Or the city? Well, it's, you know, they've decided at this point, if there is an appeal, an appeal can be filed by a member of the public or potentially a member of council, too, I believe. So it's, it's, it's up to somebody else to step up at that point and decide if, if this is an issue worth further review.
I'm supportive, just passing it as is.
All right. Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Where's our motion? What are we doing here? Um...
They're on the screen, too.
I'll make a motion to adopt PC 16-263, adopting mitigated negative declaration, based on the findings incorporated in the initial study and conclusion the project will not have significant, significant effect on the environment and based on the letters received.
Second.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Aye.
And Chair Carwin.
Aye.
And then one more?
Uh, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC 16-264, adopting Plot Plan 2015-99, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report and discussed at this commission meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Madrid.
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas.
Aye.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And Chair Carwin.
Yes. Okay, you've got a project.
And before we go any further, I just want to commend staff on the thorough work on this thing. This was a two-meeting project, a lot of stuff to go through, a lot of analysis, so thank you for that effort. Anything on our discussion items calendar? Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
All right. Community Development Director comments?
Uh, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I just wanted to give a quick update for you and the public on the Kukorion Theater and the progress that's moving forward on it. As you know, the Kukorion Theater has been proposing a, a project on Newport as part of the Menifee Town Center specific plan, and I'm happy to report that just yesterday, a development application was submitted by the applicant, the Kukorion Theaters. And actually, it's a, it's a little bit larger application than it was originally envisioned a couple of years ago when they came into the city, and we worked with them to find them a location. Currently, as it sits now, they are taking up 10 acres of, of the location right on the corner of Newport and Town Center Drive. Their original thought was to be eight acres, but Kukorion purchased the eight acres and liked Menifee so much that they bought an additional two acres. So the current application is for an 80,000-square-foot cinema building, which also includes 12 movie theaters, some of them including in, in-theater dining services. It also includes a 22-lane upscale bowling alley and a sports-themed restaurant and bar. One of the interesting features of the, the theater is, it's claimed by the applicant to have the largest screen in California of 100 foot, 100 feet wide.
Did you say two-lane or 22-lane bowling alley?
22-lane. 22-lanes, yes.
Hey, we need to talk.
Two-lane.
The 22-lane, the 2-lane bowling alley is inside the theater, so you can bowl while watching the movie.
There'd be quite a line for that, right?
Let me, you said a 100-foot screen?
100-foot screen, yes. So, and then with the additional land that they purchased, they're also proposing four outpads or parcels totaling a little over 35,000 square feet in between the four of them for additional restaurants and retail uses.
So you said it's on the corner, Town Center, Newport. I thought they were going to be in the back corner, so they're not going to be in the back corner anymore.
No, yeah. So the staff has been working with the developer for some time, working on pre-application reviews and working with their development group on the parameters prior to the submittal of the development application. So our goal is that hopefully we, that we've been able to overcome some of the questions and/or issues that may happen with the development, and with that thought, move the development through the processing, environment, entitlement processing quickly. And that is the goal of the city, as it is a top project within the city.
And because there's going to be alcohol sales, a CUP is required, so that's going to come here.
Correct, that is correct, yes.
Now, it's a specific plan, and they did an EIR, but on, do they have to do another EIR based on this specific development, or is it going to work off of the, the specific plans, EIR?
The two other acres?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what environmental item is going to have to be prepared. There was a spec, there is, there is a specific plan that did a full EIR on the uses that would be allowed in the specific plan. This wasn't allowed use, so that'll certainly be determined in the processing of the application. We just did receive it yesterday, so we'll be working on that.
Do they, do they give a timeline on opening?
Uh, currently, I don't have a timeline right at the moment, but we're hoping that it'll probably be in 2017, but the earlier part, the better. Yes.
What are the hours yet?
Uh, I don't have the hours yet at this moment.
Any, any other comments from the Community Development Director?
Uh, no, sir, that isn't it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, any reports on committee activities from the Commission?
I attended a couple of water summits pertaining to the drought conditions here in Southern California, and the major takeaway is that while we had a drought, I mean, we had rain and precipitation up north, we are still going to be getting less than our usual allotment in Southern California. And so Eastern Municipal has just made revisions to their urban water management plan, and I'm going to get a copy of that pretty quick. I'd like to say that our water rates are not probably going to change. And so that being what I've heard from these meetings, I would like to urge everybody to continue conserving water as much as possible. Eastern Municipal has a program to where those who have trees, they can get free drip stakes, as they're called, to water their trees, the deep roots. There is a concern that people are not watering the trees, and as you know, Menifee needs all the trees they can get. And so Eastern Municipal is providing these drip stakes free of charge. You can go over on Trumbull Road where their main office is and get two of these things free. Thanks.
Any other comments? We move, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.